Okay. Good evening, folks. Five thirty. I'll open this special meeting of the Board of Directors of Desert Water Agency, February nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. If you all stand, please join Director Yu.
Please place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Director is calling for item two on our agenda.
Is your mic on?
There you go.
Can you be a little closer to me?
There you go. Prior to getting started, I'd like to invite anybody who would like to have refreshments. We have some coffee, and we have some, I believe, we have some pretty good tasting cookies, and whatever else we might have there. So please feel free to have some. At this time, we'll go to item number two, the presentation. Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. And welcome to the public. Thank you for coming tonight. My name is Mark Kraus. I'm the General Manager for Desert Water Agency. We've got a short presentation, about seventeen slides. I'll be doing the first presentation, first part. It's sort of going to lay the foundation for where is Desert Water Agency? Where do we cover? We're talking about our boundaries and the basins, where they are, the cities within our boundaries, the population within the boundaries. Just a general overview, where do we do the recharge? We'll be having a kind of an intermediate presentation by Mike Riddell with Best Bussman Krieger, our attorney. He'll be talking about the California Voting Rights Act and how that fits in with Desert Water Agency. And then Ashley Metzger, our conservation and outreach manager, will finish up and talk about some of the mapping that's been done in other areas of California and how they've approached it in different ways. So we're going to talk about transitioning to elections by division. This first slide is meant to kind of give an understanding of the basins in the Coachella Valley. We have several. This yellow area is the Indio Subbasin. It goes from the Salt and Sea all the way out to where the 111 and the 10 come together. That's a single point is the terminus. We have Garnet Hill Basin right here, and then we have the Mission Creek Basin, which is basically the basin under Desert Hot Springs. And we have Desert Hot Springs Basin up here. So Desert Water Agency has a recharge facility at this end of the basin, the Mission Creek Basin, to recharge it. We also, and we do that with Coachella Valley Water District. We also have another recharge facility right in this area to recharge the Indio Basin, and that is also operated by Desert Water Agency, Coachella Valley Water District. And then we have Garnet Hill in the middle, which gets recharged depending on the water levels in these basins from either the Mission Creek or the Whitewater. And the pumpers within the Mission Creek, or not the pumpers, but the, all the, these are all the agencies that are involved in the pumping and water delivery ourselves. The Coachella Valley Water District pumps in this area of the Mission Creek. And then the Mission Springs Water District has retail water service to all Desert Hot Springs residents. And then we have private pumpers as well. And all the pumpers in the basin pay a replenishment fee. And then what we have over here is our Mission Creek recharge ponds. So basically, we have twelve ponds off of Worthley Road that recharge the Mission Creek Basin. Highway sixty-two is over here, and we have the Colorado River Aqueduct that kind of comes through the valley, right through here, and we connect to that and get water off the Metropolitan Aqueduct and recharge the basins. This slide is to help give you a better idea of how, or what our boundary looks like. And then the northern end of our boundaries look identical almost to the Mission Springs, our Mission, yeah, Mission Springs District boundaries, except in a couple of places. There's one area right here that's in the San Gregonio Pass Subbasin, and so you can see it's not present here. And then there's a three-square-mile area right here that is not within our boundaries, but is within the Mission Springs Water District boundaries. But otherwise, the boundaries are virtually identical with very few exceptions. Because we rely at the same area that Mission Springs does, everyone within the Desert Hot Springs area has, in the past, they voted for all five of our seats. Every time there's an election, you have an opportunity to vote for whoever's running for those seats. This is the same for, you'd have the same situation for the Mission Springs Water District. Virtually all the Mission Springs Water Districts is within DWA, so that's why that is the case. This is just, this is a good boundary map. It shows our boundary, the entire boundary, the entire three hundred and twenty-five square miles. And it shows all the cities. You have Desert Hot Springs, and Palm Springs, and Cathedral City. And we serve Cathedral City right along this corridor, and then Palm Springs, we have retail service in this area. And those are the cities within our boundaries. So it's about ninety thousand people. We also have county areas, some remote areas that we serve as well. This is a blow-up of our existing retail service. It's Palm Springs and some outlying areas off of the 111 towards the 10 freeway. So everything in Palm Springs and, except the north end of it, and we have Cathedral City, Cathedral City Cove, and along the 111. This slide shows population by area, and you have Desert Hot Springs, around twenty-six thousand; Desert Edge, about a thousand; the Whitewater area, around seven hundred; and Palm Springs, around forty-four thousand, five hundred, plus or minus, about six thousand in Cathedral City, and nineteen in Rancho Mirage. So this is, all this, the populations shown on this map are from the two thousand and ten census, which is eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventeen, pretty close to the ninety thousand. If you were to divide that into five different divisions, it would be seventeen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three per division. This is a map that shows the percentage of the Latino population within our boundaries. You can basically see that there's small pockets here and there of seventy-five to a hundred percent, sixty-five to seventy-five percent. So they're not, you know, really condensed in any one area, but they, there are little pieces everywhere within our boundaries. Now I come to the part of the presentation on the law, and I'm not an attorney, so I'm going to hand it over to Mike Riddell, who is an attorney, to take us through that a little bit.
Thank you, Mark. Ladies and gentlemen, the agency was created in nineteen sixty-one by a special act of the California State Legislature. And in fact, the agency has its own act. The act actually calls it the Desert Water Agency Law. And what the nineteen sixty-one act provided and continues to provide is that the agency's board consists of five board members, each elected in the manner provided in the Uniform District Election Law, which is set forth in the Elections Code. The law did not create separate divisions within the agency, and therefore, the elections of directors have always been conducted at large. In fact, there's no provision in the agency's act for converting to elections by division. And so, over the years, every registered voter within the agency has always been allowed to vote in every agency election for any position on the board. However, in two thousand and sixteen, the legislature added a section to the Elections Code, Section one zero six five zero, which provides that notwithstanding any other law, the governing body of a special district by resolution may require that the members of the governing body shall be elected using a "district-based" or "division-based" method of election without being required to submit that resolution to the voters for its approval in furtherance of the purposes of the California Voting Rights Act of two thousand and one. The California Voting Rights Act of two thousand and one, as Mark mentioned, provides that an at-large method of election may not be imposed or applied in a manner that impairs the ability of a "protected class" of voters to elect candidates of their choice or their ability to influence the outcome of an election as a result of the dilution or the abridgement of the rights of the voters who are members of the protected class. A protected class is a class of voters who are members of a race, color, or language minority group. The law is intended to prevent racially polarized voting, and racially polarized voting occurs when there is a difference between the choice of candidates preferred by voters in the protected class and the choice of candidates preferred by voters in the rest of the electorate. There's no legal requirement to produce evidence of historical discrimination or discriminatory intent in order to prove a violation of the California Voting Rights Act. Furthermore, racially polarized voting can be demonstrated by the results of non-agency elections within the agency's boundaries. So you don't have to show that racially polarized voting occurred in an agency election if you can show that there is evidence of it having occurred in some other election conducted within the agency's boundaries. On this, in late December of last year, the agency received a letter from an attorney representing the Southwest Voter Registration Education Project. I did not know what that was, but you can actually find it online. It's an organization that represents minority groups, primarily Latinos, throughout the United States, not just in California. And the letter received in late December claims that the agency's at-large system of voting dilutes the ability of Latinos to elect candidates of their choice or to otherwise influence the outcome of agency elections. So the agency has no evidence that this has occurred, other than the assertions that are made in the letter, but the most effective way to minimize the risk of exposure is to adopt a resolution expressing the agency's intention to transition from elections at large to elections by division. Special districts that conduct their elections by division are protected from lawsuits under the California Voting Rights Act, regardless of whether that really has the effect of furthering the interests of minority-class voters. So two weeks ago today, at a regular board meeting on the date, the board adopted a resolution of intention, and under the procedures provided by statute, what they provide is that the process shall be that the board conducts two public hearings before it can even think about drawing maps showing division boundaries. And so this is the second of the public hearings that has been called pursuant to that statute, and the purpose is to solicit input from members of the public as to how they might like the division to be composed. And so the purpose of this hearing tonight is to take comment from members of the public who wish to express their ideas, their thoughts, their preferences regarding how the agency's five divisions should be composed. I've asked the board not to develop or express any preferences about division boundaries until they've had an opportunity to receive full input at both public hearings in order to satisfy those super requirements. And so that's the purpose of tonight's meeting. It's, I worry a little bit about questions that might be asked that could result in conversations that would lead the board to draw conclusions that should not be drawn until the conclusion of both public hearings, when they can consider the input of everyone who wants to speak on the issue.
Thank you, Mike. So this kind of sums up some of what Mr. Riddell was speaking to. Currently, everyone within our boundary votes for all of the seats that are available. So whether you live in Desert Hot Springs, or Palm Springs, or the part of Cathedral City that we serve, you have a vote every time we have a seat up for election, so every two years, and even years now. And if we were to transition into election by division, each segment would be able to vote for one board representative that's accountable to their area alone. So the way the process works, as we've described, there are two public hearings for initial input. That's why we're here tonight. After which point, our demographer, which is the same firm that the city of Palm Springs, city of Cathedral City, Desert Healthcare District, the same company that they've used, will help us draw some maps, hopefully gleaning from a lot of what they learned in the previous processes. And then we'll have another couple meetings so that everyone can look at the maps, provide feedback, and then finally, we will adopt a map, probably by the end of summer this year. Some samples of just basic maps, you know, they're different shapes and sizes, the districts, because they're based on the population. But these are some of the maps that were given to us as examples of pretty straightforward cases. And then these two are actually very interesting because they advance a community of interest. So in the case of Pasadena, which you see right here, Colorado Boulevard, which is the downtown area, touches every council member, and that was so that every council member had some sort of accountability to the downtown community. That was a very important goal that the city had when they were going to districts. And this example, Central Unified is a school district, and for them, the community of interest was each school campus. They wanted the children and the families to have more than one board member that they were accountable to. So all of these divisions split a school in half so that parents wouldn't just have one person they could go to, they would have more than one. So this is an example of where a community of interest could come into play with maps. So with a public hearing, we're not only trying to be transparent and give you an overview of what's going on, but we really want to hear what you have to say. And what we're looking for feedback on specifically is, you know, what matters to you as we go through this process? Would your community like to see one representative that is entirely for this area or multiple representatives? And then anything else you believe that the demographer, the person who is drawing the lines on these maps, drafting them, should have in mind when doing so? And if you don't want to give comment today, we also have information up on our website. You can look at all of the, you can look at the presentation from the last public hearing. We also have a video of that available. We have some frequently asked questions, and then we have a copy of the resolution that Mr. Riddell spoke about. And then, once the maps are available, which we're not quite sure when that'll be, and it will take him some time to put them together, but perhaps anywhere from two weeks to three months from now, they'll be posted online. So go ahead and head there, and that's, also, there will be information. If you email divisions@dwa.org with your comments, we will take them that way as well, anytime throughout this process, but the earlier the better. And with that, I would welcome our board president to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mrs. Metzger. Prior to that, you'll see on item number three on the agenda is public input. At this time, we invite members of the public to make comments on any item not listed on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the agency. In addition, members of the public may speak on any item listed on the agenda as that item comes up for consideration. Speakers are requested to keep their comments to no more than three minutes. As provided in the Frown Act, the board is prohibited from acting on items not listed on the agenda. So you can see under item number three, you can talk to us on any thing that you'd like to talk to us about. However, when we go to item number four and open the public hearing, that is the time that we will be specifically requesting your comments with regards to the district. All right. At this particular point in time, under public input, is there any member of the public who'd like to address us at this time? Okay, see none?
Well, I can't pass something on personally. Members of the board, I'm Carl Baker, resident of Desert Hot Springs, and I was ruminating on whether that was actually an invitation by your opening remarks that perhaps we could speak twice, once on anything we wanted to and once on specifically. And since I'm long-winded, I'm going to take advantage of both opportunities, I suspect. I, first of all, I support wholeheartedly the idea of going to districts. I think it could be a chance for other areas, which here before have never been represented on the DWA board, to have perhaps representation. I would like to add to comments by Mr. Riddell that the C-B-R-A does not restrict this district being too racially typed things anymore. In fact, communities of interest can and should be a consideration. Another thing that is, I think, important is the potential growth. The demographer's map that was shown earlier in the Cindy Pack that you handed out shows Desert Hot Springs with a population in two thousand and ten of twenty-six thousand approximately. Now, that's not the city, as I understand it. That is the Desert Hot Springs area, which can include a lot of county territory that's oftentimes referred to as Desert Hot Springs. Now, current estimates on census are much greater than that, but we have to go by twenty-thousand-and-ten numbers at this point in time. But I would urge us, board and I, my other comments when I speak, are going to be talking about the future growth that exists within this community, because I think that's a major factor to consider, because it is very conceivable that by two thousand and ten, our population could equal that of Palm Springs on this side of the freeway. So because I'm running short on time, I wish you'd put that in a place where we could see it better from the stand here, but I'll be conscious. I would urge, right now, the demographer said that each district should have about seventy thousand people, based upon the two thousand and ten census. According to the figures in the map, that would show that this side of the freeway would be entitled to one and a half representatives. I would urge the board to consider two representatives on this side of the freeway, primarily because this side of the freeway has the potential for substantially greater growth, and I'll get into some specifics when I speak again. But we have potential for growth here that far includes what's available in the Palm Springs and Cathedral City areas, which now are largely built out, even given for the pack that there's vacant to land. Okay. I'll see you again.
Well done, and timely, I think, Mr. Riddell. Would anybody else like to address more?
Hi, good evening. Nancy Wright, six zero eight seven five, fair dude. I just wanted to get up and say that I agree with a lot of what Carl just did, if not all of what Carl just said. What are we going to do in two years when the two thousand and twenty census comes out? Because I know the two thousand and ten, just by looking at how much we produce at our wastewater treatment plant, I mean, we're way over what the two thousand and ten census has said, so I would like to see us look more towards what we already basically know when we do, when we do any modeling or anything that we do at the water district. We have a good sense about how many we actually have here now, mainly because of the wastewater and how much water is being used. So you guys know that. You can tell how many people you have in your area versus in two thousand and ten. So I'd like to see that, too, which would also be meet about two, at least two over here, maybe, I'll just say two, I'm sure. So in a couple of years, if, let's just say, I guess, my question is, if in two years we find out that that is a greater, much greater number than in two thousand and ten, what goes on then? Do we just keep going the way we are, with just ones for the Mission Springs Water District area and four for the other area, or what? I know you can't answer my question, but that, that's fine. That's kind of one of my thoughts here. And I also wanted to know about the unincorporated areas. Did anybody, did you guys go out and try to get those people to know about this meeting? Just wanting, we have a lot of mobile home parks and whatnot out Dillon that we serve. We have Mission Lake's Country Club. Haven't heard, you know, don't know if they, these people know about that. Although, this is not a great subject that anybody's really that concerned about, that I don't think they even understand it. To tell you the truth, I don't even know if they realize there was two water districts on their ballot all these years, because, you know, nobody knows who you guys are, because thank you for coming over, but this is your first time in thirty years that I know that you've been over here with your board, so thank you for coming. I might have some more comments. Another question is, when you get the maps drawn and you have another public hearing, it's not too late to make comments. Have you guys considered those comments at that point in time, is it? Do you guys think that that? I mean, I, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna ask you. I just want to make sure that, because I don't really know what to ask right now, because I don't have any idea what it's going to look like, but it might have some real concerns once we see the maps. So I just want to make sure that whatever that public hearing is, whenever it is, that you guys can take into consideration our comments at that time, too.
Thank you. Next speaker. See none, we will close the public input. Please come on.
Hi, my name's Stella, and I'm a resident here of Desert Hot Springs, and I'm also with the Haba Warriors. And I also feel that there should be two people that represent Desert Hot Springs, just because, you know, there's three already in Palm Springs, and I'd rather have people that live in Desert Hot Springs making decisions for Desert Hot Springs or me, than that thing that doesn't even exist. Just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. President, are we still in the public comment portion?
You're still in the public comment.
Public input, not the public hearing yet.
Okay. If no one else would like to speak during the public input portion, we will close that portion, and we will, at this time, open the public hearing to receive public input regarding the composition of divisions and to consider division boundaries as proposed in Elections Code, Section one zero zero one zero. At this particular point in time, we'd like to hear from anybody who would like to address the board, and remember that, please keep your comments to three minutes.
How many minutes?
Three.
Okay, I'm looking at the Latino population map.
And for the record?
Oh, I'm Yvonne Parks.
Thank you.
And I live in the unincorporated area of Desert Hot Springs, over there on Desert Edge, in one of those mobile home communities. Just moved out there, so anyway. In looking at the map, I noticed that there's an awful lot of purple over there on the east side of Desert Hot Springs, which would lead me to consider that east side as a division or district. And then on the north, and there's a lot of pink, and that's the seventy-five to eighty percent, or seventy-five to ninety percent by population, and there's patches of pink throughout that area, and there's a lot of yellow and green. There's a, just a semblage of colors that determine percentages. So if you're going to do two divisions, and I would like to see that, I think that definitely one on the east side that includes the unincorporated areas of Desert Edge, and then the other portion of Desert Hot Springs. That would be my input. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Pardon?
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. I have to get back to my seat. I just had a knee replacement.
Next speaker, please.
Carl Baker again. Addressing specifically this side of the freeway and what I would like to suggest in divisions. As I said earlier, two, uh, directors for sure. My suggestion would be that you go up Palm Drive and do everything on the east as former Mayor Parks was suggesting as one district, on the west, the other district. But you go to Pearson, which goes from the middle of the city. Take a jog over east just to get to that portion that's a jog that's different than the Hacienda Heights portion of our city. So we go up Palm Drive to Pearson over, catch that northern park. So you have that on the west side. And then you have up Palm Drive to Pearson and all the way out to Hacienda Heights and Desert Edge as a second one. I had a conversation today with the city planner, and, uh, he enlightened me on a few things. Currently, there is an active track map being proposed for 8,500 homes. That's homes. In the western side of the city, what is formerly known as the Snellenburg Project. It straddles Highway 62 near where Mission Lakes Boulevard intersects. Of that 8,500, 2,200 are currently active. The 8,500 is the total. That is not projected probably until after 2010, I mean, 2020, but the 2,200 is likely to be sooner than that. There is another development that's very actively being concerned that's at the eastern end of Pearson in what is the former Walt Lewis, about Walter Luce development, not Lewis, Luce. About 1,200 homes. Now, when you say homes, I think we have to consider at least two, if not the number 2.3, uh, on a population basis. Then there is another project at 15th and Palm roughly. That's 15th Avenue, which is south where, in the, where Walmart was proposed, of about 300 condominiums that have been approved. So those are active improvements that are currently on the maps that are going to be, uh, needing a water surface as well as adding to the population of this area. The other thing that the planning director pointed out to me, and I think this is very important for Desert Hot Springs, is his most active stuff today is growth in our industrial area, especially in the cultivation of, of cannabis. That is, of course, a need for water to a great extent. But there's substantial industrial development going on over in our industrial, which is in the west, in the southwest portion of our city. So I'm running out of time again, six seconds. That's pretty good.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Nancy Wright, and as Carl was talking, I got to thinking about our urban water master plan and, and our sewer master plan and our water infrastructure master plan. They'd be all good, uh, reports to look at to see what is on the books. All those that Carl was talking about, they're all on the books. And so you will see how the developments are and how many there are, how many homes are, gives you all that idea on that. So I think it'd be a good idea for you guys to take a look.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Give it a second here because to make sure everybody has a chance. Anybody who's thinking about it? That was your chance?
Three minutes is too much for me.
All right, going once, going twice, going three times. At this time, we close the public hearing. I want to thank all of the speakers that are here tonight and all of the folks from the community who have come out to listen. We have concluded the second public hearing, as you have explained, uh, by Mr. Riddell, our attorney. I want to thank you for being here tonight to share your input. Please check our website and social media for information about future public hearings on this very important topic. At this particular point in time, we will adjourn this meeting. Thanks, folks.